Good morning, everyone. Welcome to the Lancaster County Board of Commissioners meeting for Tuesday, November 30th, 2021. I am Commissioner-in-Chair Rick Vesp. To my left is Commissioner Sean Flowerday. To my right is Commissioner Roma Amundson. Would you please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Clerk, please begin the meeting.
The Comprehensive Open Meetings Act is located on the wall at the rear of the front, at the rear of the hearing room. Additionally, all written material discussed at today's open meeting is available for electronic viewing from the county clerk's staff. Printing options are available upon request. The material can also be viewed on the county's website at lancaster.gov. Jen, I want your minutes. Approve the minutes of the Board of Commissioners meeting held on Tuesday, November 23rd, 2021.
Move approval.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve item 1A. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Shore?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Vesp?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero. Next is approval of minutes of the Board of Commissioners' special meeting on the comprehensive plan amendment 210002, held on Tuesday, November 23rd, 2021.
Move approval. Second.
A motion and a second to approve item 1B. Please call the roll.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Vesp?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero. Number two are claims. Approval of all claims processed through November 30th, 2021.
Move approval of all claims.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the claims? Please call the roll.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Vesp?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero. Next is number three, consent items. These are routine business items that are expected to be adopted without any dissent. Any individual item may be removed for special discussion and consideration by a commissioner or by any member of the public without prior notice unless there is an exception. These items will be approved as one with a single vote of the Board of Commissioners. These items are approval of amendments and change orders to the following county contracts: C-17-894 with Sue Sales Company for annual supply, county corrections, uniform accessories; C-18-288 with Encompass for annual supply, office seating; C-21-147 with Peterson Earth Moving Inc. for a working day review resulting in the disincentive being assessed for the project; C-21-396 with Midwest Infrastructure to change pipe size from 36-inch to 24-inch at the U243 pipe location; C-21-435 with Garcia Chacon Enterprises, Inc. for the addition of site C-253; C-21-435 with Garcia Chacon Enterprises, Inc. to extend the contract from December 4th, 2021 through June 1st, 2022. Setting a public hearing for Tuesday, December 27th, or excuse me, for Tuesday, December 7th, 2021, at 9:00 a.m. in Room 112 of the County City Building. In the event an appeal is timely filed regarding the appeal of the Lincoln Lancaster County Planning Commissioners' approval of special permit 21042 to allow for the construction of a large solar energy conversion system in compliance with Section 13-051 of the Lancaster County zoning regulations on property generally located from west of 148th to 190th Street and from Holdridge Street to north of Havelock.
Jennifer Holloway, Lancaster County Attorney's Office. I was just going to ask if you were to remove the, setting the public hearing for the solar appeal, so we can discuss that individually.
I move approval of the consent items excluding item B.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the consent items with the exclusion of item B. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Amundson?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Vesp?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero.
The reason I wanted to pull that off is I wanted to update you. You guys may have noticed that the language for setting the public hearing was a little different. Due to the timing for your 30-day requirement to hear an appeal, and because of the timing constraints with the holidays, we kind of had to, I mean, we knew it would be appealed, but we didn't know when, so we wanted to go ahead and get it scheduled so we could meet our notice requirements and get that on. But, so we let everyone know that we hadn't received an appeal yet, but we were scheduling in anticipation of one, but last Wednesday on the 24th, we did receive that appeal. So I just wanted to make that clear on the record that an appeal has been filed, and the hearing will be the 7th, and then we'll have a supposed special voting session like usual after that.
So we can, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
We can go ahead and vote to approve item B, removing the language in the event an appeal is filed.
Yeah, you don't even have to remove, you don't have to remove that language. You're still setting it. I just wanted to make it clear that we do have the appeal on file.
Move approval.
Well, I would add an adem dim here. Now, will we be having a regular staff meeting next Tuesday as well?
After the conclusion of the...
We will do the public hearing, then the staff meeting.
Yep.
Is it possible to move the time up with the commissioners being in favor of starting at 8:00 instead of 9:00?
We've sent notice out.
Yeah, notice has been sent out, and it's been published in the paper.
Doesn't matter what the commissioners are willing to do, then I gather. Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve item B. Please call the roll.
Amundson?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Vesp?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero. Next is number four, public hearing. This is application for a Class D liquor license for 5B CLLC doing businesses Emerald Mini-Mart, and a corporate manager's liquor license for Garinda Singh Chima.
All right, we'll open the public hearing. It's the applicant here. Yeah, there we go. You'll have to be sworn in, sir.
Raise your hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony about to give is the truth and nothing but the truth?
I swear.
Now, just tell us a little bit about yourself and this application, if you would.
Yeah. I have experience in liquor business from last 20 years, and we find this opportunity here, and we just want to buy this one.
Okay. Commissioners, any questions for...
Just to clarify, you've been in the liquor business for 20 years, and then you are now purchasing the Emerald...
Yes.
...mini-mart. Where have your years of experience been?
I'm from Canada. I just moved here, and I'm doing a retail over there, like 17 or 18 years, then I moved here, and we had a liquor store here too, but I was not a part of the, in the liquor. I was just helping my friend on that, and that, so I figured out I should move on this one and buy this on my own.
Okay. So this will be your first time with your name on the liquor license then?
Yes, sir.
That's correct. Any other questions, Commissioner? I think we need one minute, sir, just scanning the application.
I'm looking at the application. I can't find it.
It's, the link didn't take you to it?
I'm looking for the agenda in my emails. It's my email that I can't find.
I got you. I'll get it to you. It was sent, you know, it was sent Wednesday at 11:34. Or I can send it to you as well.
Would you send it to me also?
Yes.
So you have completed the Nebraska Alcohol Server Certification Program?
Both of them, city and state.
Okay. That's a very long application.
No.
Multiple pages.
A lot of pages. Again?
Mm-hmm. He sent it.
Nope. Okay, I'll send it again.
Okay. Now it's coming up. Okay.
Okay, very good. Take your time. I apologize for the delay, sir. Just gathering, we're gathering information here. So you were in Canada for 17 years and then came to Lincoln? Did I understand that correctly?
No, I just came to Nebraska, Sydney, Nebraska.
Okay, Sydney. I did see Sydney in there.
Yes, Sydney, Nebraska. And then for family reason, I moved for three months in the taxes, and then I got a call from a broker. He finds something for me here in Lincoln, and then I said, okay, we'll move back to here, and...
Took you a little bit, but you found the best place to be, right?
Yeah, it's the best place. Yeah, we regret to going over there for three months. Like, it was not a good decision.
When basically you're buying a mini-mart convenience store in Emerald, Nebraska, they sell liquor, they have, and you would like to continue that process.
That's what it is.
Yeah. So...
Any questions?
Yeah, no, I'm good.
Okay, then I, I, thank you for your time. I would entertain a motion, well, wait, no, public hearing. Sir, thank you for your testimony this morning.
Thank you.
You may step down.
Thank you.
If there anyone else here who would like to speak regarding this liquor license? We will close the public hearing?
Next is new business. 5A is a resolution in matter of an application for a Class D liquor license for 5B CLLC doing businesses Emerald Mini-Mart, and a corporate manager's liquor license for Garinda Singh Chima.
Move approval.
Second.
A motion and a second to approve this application for a Class D liquor license. Any further discussion? Please call the roll.
Shore?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Vesp?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero. B is a resolution authorizing a traffic sign change from 55 mile per hour to 45 mile per hour on North 148th Street between Alvo Road and Interstate 80, the Interstate 80 Overpass.
Pam Dingman, Lancaster County Engineer. As the commissioners are aware, we are constantly evaluating our system to make sure that it is the safest. Recently, I had the opportunity to speak at the Waverly Kiwanis, which, by the way, meet at 7:00 a.m. on Saturday mornings, and you do have to come presentable. That being said, a constituent brought up a concern about this corridor, feeling that the site distance wasn't adequate and may be warranted as speed reduction on the south side of the I-80 bridge on 148th Street coming into Waverly. And so, we did study the crest curve as well as the sag curve in this corridor, and we did determine that indeed the speed limit should be reduced to 45 miles an hour. And so, therefore, I'm coming before you at this time to request a reduction in speed limit as we approach Waverly on 148th Street.
Been over that road many times. Would move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve item B. Please call the roll.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Vesp?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero. C is appointment of Bob Huzz, Gerald Claussen, and Nicole Miller to the Lancaster County Extension Board for three-year terms from January 1st, 2022 through December 31st, 2024.
Good morning. Karen Wobig, Lancaster County Extension. With me today, I'll just point out, so you know what's going on, Vicki Jedlica is our media specialist, and she would like to snap a few shots of the newest members, so...
Feel free to, feel free to stand wherever you want to.
Yeah. Right over his shoulder.
It's a great view.
I guess. Well, we're here today just to basically introduce the newest members of the Extension Board, which is kind of the annual process we go through. The Lancaster Extension Board has already approved these folks, and now we're bringing it forth to you for appointment on our board. So, we have Bob Utes, who is joining for a second term, so we're really grateful for that, and then the newest members, Nicole Miller and Gerald Claussen. And so I'd like to turn it over to them for just a moment, and they can tell a little bit about themselves. So Bob, why don't you start?
Yes, I'm Bob Utes. I farm south towards Sprague and Hickman, and I find it very interesting being on the board, and they do wonderful work, and it teaches the young folks where our food comes from, and just all kinds of issues. But if you don't teach the young folks where food comes from, their future can be in peril, especially in these times, you know, that we don't know how our future's going to be, and they're empowering the young folk to produce their own food possibly in whatever endeavor they have. So it's critical stuff they're working with, and I found it very interesting being part of the board and the education that's going forward. So I enjoy being part of the process.
Tremendous compliment when someone serves one term and then comes back for a second, Bob. So it's a great endorsement of the work.
Thank you.
Nicole?
Hi, I'm Nicole Miller, and I am very grateful for this opportunity. I first learned about the County Extension Board through my participation in the County Leadership Academy. So this is a great way for me to move forward with that, be of positive impact in my community, and maybe get back to a little bit of my roots of teaching children from my work at Pioneer's Park Nature Center, and getting involved in the community and families, especially during this time when people are so separated and divided. So, thank you for the opportunity.
That was a positive outcome of Leadership Academy.
Boy, I'm going to say.
Good morning. I'm Garret Claussen. I live in the southwest part of Lincoln. I'm a transplant here. I spent about 28 years as a city manager, mostly in Iowa. My wife and I still own a farm in Knox County. I have a huge interest in youth development. I'm very strongly involved in FFA. I've been a national judge for a decade or more, and I'm interested in making sure that government functions well. I also serve on the Nebraska Public Employees Retirement System Board, and it's interesting to see, I spent hundreds, if not thousands, of hours in the role that you are sitting off to the side as supposedly the advisor as a city manager. Enjoy the opportunity and look forward to having an impact upon some people's lives in the future, positive impact.
Terrific.
We really appreciate your volunteerism. Wonderful. Each bring a different viewpoint and aspect and skill set to the board, so great selections. Yes.
Thank you for having us here, and if you will appoint them via vote, we would sure appreciate it.
Well, folks, I mean, if you have Karen's endorsement, that's a really big deal, so...
That's big.
Thank you all for doing this. It's God's work, it really is, and we just appreciate you being a part of it, so, an ongoing part for you, Bob. Thank you.
I will move approval of item C for these individuals to the Lancaster County Extension Board. Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve item C. Please call the roll.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Vesp?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
5D is a recommendation from the purchasing agent and county sheriff toward an executive sole source purchase order for a Bearcat Tulenco armored vehicles in the amount of
Good morning, Terry Waiger, Lancaster County Sheriff, and Ben Houshner, my chief deputy. As you know, we currently have a military surplus armored vehicle. It's our emergency rescue vehicle. It's been in operation now for about eight and a half or nine years. That vehicle is mammoth. It's huge. It's expensive to maintain, and we want to take this opportunity to produce a commercial armored vehicle that's made for law enforcement, not made for the military, made for law enforcement. And so, I've got a picture, representation of what that looks like. And it would hold our tactical team in the rear of the vehicle, and it's a commercial, or it's a civilian gasoline engine that can be worked on by the county shops and not nearly as expensive to maintain. Our current vehicle, we would return that to government surplus and then make that available for other agencies that may want it. This money would not come from our operating budget, from our general tax budget, but come from forfeited assets.
The one that you've had for the last eight years, Terry, how often is a vehicle like this called into service?
You know, we were just discussing that. About 20 times a year it goes out. We assist the Lincoln Police Department's tactical team when they go out. It goes out with our folks. We do public demonstrations with them. We've assisted other counties and the State Patrol when they've had armed subjects in another county, in CAFs County for sure. So it's used not enough to wear it out, but it's used enough to justify it.
They also use it for, like, floods and, like, emergency, right? Haven't we done some flood rescue?
We did, yes. Yeah, it sits high enough to where it could negotiate, or too shallow water for a boat, too deep water for a normal vehicle, we've used that vehicle to rescue folks in the floods.
I will move approval. Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve. Please call the roll.
Amundson?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Vesp?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero.
Thank you.
E is a recommendation from the purchasing agent and county engineer toward an executive purchase order for brine tanks to Snyder Industries, Inc., in amount of $110,721.38.
My name is Ed Laumann. I work for Lancaster County Engineering. I'm the facility manager. We bring forward to you, we are asking for, we added two additional trucks to our brine system this year, so we're asking for five of the larger tanks and two of the smaller tanks to be prepared for large snow events.
Okay, these are tanks that would just store the brine, then?
That is correct.
And this was an item previously approved junior budget, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve item E. Please call the roll.
Shore?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Vesp?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero. F is a contract with Maxwell Products, Inc. for annual supply asphaltic joint sealant.
Pam Dingman, Lancaster County Engineer. This is our annual supply of joint sealant. We do order it, we try to order it as early as possible so that we have it. That's becoming more and more important with the continued shortages of these sort of materials, and so, this was in our budget also.
Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve item F. Please call the roll.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Vesp?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero. G is an agreement with the Lincoln League of Women Voters to assist with voter registration sites in Lancaster County.
Move approval. Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve this agreement with the Lincoln League of Women Voters. Please call the roll.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Vesp?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero. H is a contract with Third Millennium to provide evidence-based online intervention to youth in the county's juvenile diversion program.
Move approval. Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve item H. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Amundson?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Vesp?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero. 5I is a subscription agreement with Emergency Services Marketing Corp., Inc. for use of the IamResponding.com. The county should pay $29,750, one-time setup fee of $280, and telephone charges of $90 annually for the services, provided the term of the agreement is January 2021. The term of the agreement is January 1st, 2022 through December 31st, 2026.
Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to agree this, to approve the subscription agreement with Emergency Services Marketing Corp.
And I appreciate the work for emergency management and being the conduit for these funds that will support our rural responders and having more reliable communications between, amongst themselves using IMresponding.com.
Very good. It's great to have that kind of partnership in our county. Please call the roll.
Shore?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero. J, your agreements with following for job shadowing at the Youth Services Center, Jessica Hudson, Dakota Brace, Ally Taylor, and Gregory Vest.
Move approval. Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve item J. Please call the roll.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero. Number six is public comment. Those wishing to speak on items relating to county business, nonengendered, we do so at this time.
All right, I'm not seeing anyone here. Is there anyone who'd like to make a public comment? I guess not. We'll move on.
Next is announcements. The Lancaster County Board of Commissioners will hold a staff meeting on Thursday, December 2nd, 2021, at 8:30 a.m. in Room 112 of the County City Building. The Lancaster County Board of Commissioners will hold its next regular meeting on Tuesday, December 7th, 2021, at 9:00 a.m. with the Board of Equalization immediately following in Room 112 of the County City Building. County Commissioners can be reached at 402-441-7447 or commission@lancaster NE.gov. The Lancaster County Board of Commissioners meeting is broadcast live on Link TV City. For the great broadcast schedule, visit lincoln NE.gov. Meetings are also streamed live on Link TV and can be viewed on YouTube.
I move adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn. Please call the roll.